The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for a moment, silence for our country. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
On behalf of the commissioners, we'd like to take a moment this morning to recognize the passing of a former county commissioner, Leon Allen. He passed over the weekend. He served our county from 2008 to 2011. And after he was done being a commissioner, he stayed on the area of the aging board and the tourism board. So we just would like to acknowledge this and recognize him for his service to our county and to give our sympathies to the Leon Allen family.
Sir?
You good?
Sure.
We will open now with public comment.
Does that involve the agenda?
The agenda.
I have a question about number seven.
Yes.
What constitutes a visit? I mean, does the physician have to perform any services or he just walks in, walks out for 150 bucks, one way or the other?
Well, we have Barbara Durkin here with us today, and she is the director of Lacrima Suscana Drug and Alcohol. So Barb, would you like to answer that?
Sure. This allows my office to contract with Barnes-Cassin for the provision of medication-assisted treatment services. And in terms of the doctor's visit, you actually have to be examined by the physician, and then the physician will determine then what course of treatment would be best for that person. This rate is actually established based on the rural Medicare rate, so we didn't really have any flexibility with establishing what the physician rate was. That was already provided to us by Barnes-Cassin based on what the rural rate already is. But it is a full medical evaluation as well as the follow-up evaluations with the physician.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a follow-up question on that. Want to finish that?
Sure.
It says it's physician and pharmacy services, so that includes some type of pharmaceuticals?
Sure. The medication itself, it's for the provision of buprenorphine, which is Suboxone or Subutex, for someone struggling with an opioid use disorder, or Vemetrol, which is the injectable blocker as it relates to an opioid use disorder.
And that's also on Medicaid rates?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Next? You have a question? Anybody else?
Also. I had a couple of questions that actually are from last meeting. We had an MOU with the Department of State for network monitoring, cybersecurity services. Is there any cost involved with that? That was not listed on the agenda.
No, there's no cost at this time.
All right.
It's all paid for through the state.
All right. And then we also had the agreement for behavioral health and intellectual disabilities, early intervention program. Is that through the Lacrima Susquehanna Consortium?
Director.
It does not reflect that either. So I was just thinking that the MOU should, you know, that the minutes should reflect that it is with a certain agency. So.
Thank you for that.
A couple of follow-ups from prior meetings as well. In the one, excuse me. We were talking about the secretary. I think Judy was answering those questions. And I was just wondering why we don't have the PA Department of Health nurse specifically in Susquehanna County? And has there been a request for reinstating? Because I know at one time we did have them.
The previous Department of Health nurse that we had resigned from that position at the end of August. They posted that position, but it has not been filled as of yet. So Wyoming County is assisting with the contact tracing and those job duties for us until that job is replaced.
Okay, so we do have it posted though, so hopefully we'll have it.
Yeah, they posted it. I believe the first day of the posting was the last day of August. The last day of, yeah, last day of July. I apologize for missing that.
Okay. Another follow-up was, and I think we got part of that answered here earlier, where are all the county audits up to date yet? I think we just have the one that's not up to date right now.
She's why you ask me?
No.
But we have two auditors here today, so we'll be happy to answer anything that you have. And to answer your question, our overall county audit is on track, and we have until the end of the year to have that appropriately filed. And then, you know, from time to time, there are certain line offices that, you know, we have to prod and get some more information from. But all in all, we're in great shape. We are working with one office that is, you know, providing us additional information to help us get some clarity. But there's nothing that we've seen, collectively seen, that would be inappropriate, disrespectful, disregarding, anything offline. Just catching up with paperwork is what we're doing.
All right, because that's, I think, what you explained last time, is that we were just waiting for some paperwork. Is there, do you have any idea, maybe an estimate?
You know, there's a fine line between us asking and demanding, and we always want to take the road of asking and not demand anything. And we try our best to allow each office to, you know, run the way that that office is run. You know, we rarely have gone in there and said it has to be A, B, or C, because they all have the right to run their office the way that they see appropriately, under the county code, to run it, right? So all we're looking for is the results of how they're running their office. So to answer your question, we're still waiting.
So there's not really a timeframe for them to have that paperwork on?
At some point in time, we're going to get to that timeframe. We're just not there yet. And they've been very cooperative. People have been very cooperative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
From this week's agenda, we've got a contract with the Sheriff's Department, court of domestic relations, law petition, security services. I have not seen something like this come through before. Could you guys explain that?
Every five years they get done.
All right. I don't remember.
Yeah, it's required through domestic relations, through the state agency, that they have contracts, not only with the Sheriff's Department to do their services for them, but also with their, the hearing master that does the work for them too.
On that same subject, is there, it looks, it looked like it was maybe a transfer or something, but it's just, as you explained that just now, is there funding or something that goes along with this, the cost to the contract?
No, what it is, is it's services that we do anyway. We just get the right to bill against the DRS, so we can get 80% funding back from the state on it.
Thank you.
Vera?
Yeah, I'd like to know how the money is doing, the $3.6 million, to help our businesses. How much of it is spent? How many businesses have been helped? And is there any rent money available for help also?
There is rent money available, yes. And right now, there's about 23 businesses that are being helped, and there's others that are being reviewed, that they're pending. And if you see the number on here, it's $126,640 of that is being sent toward businesses. And we have also helped fire companies.
So you spent 120, how much did you spend to the fire?
$290 for the fire companies.
$290?
Approximately, approximately.
So we're still, we still haven't hit $1 million yet?
No.
Of being spent? So, and rent money, how do people apply for that if they need help?
Through the Housing Authority.
And that's coming out of this fund, the $3.6 million? What about mortgages, if they can't pay mortgages?
No mortgage.
They're not doing that. They're not helping. We don't understand that, but they're not helping with mortgages. Just around.
State guidelines don't allow it.
And do you know what our unemployment rate is in the county since this COVID thing?
I read that the other day. I don't remember. Was it 5 something? Maybe I'll read it.
No, it wasn't $100.
No.
And do you know how many people are in the hospital with the supposed COVID?
No, I do not.
And have you taken tests? Have any of you taken the tests for COVID?
I have taken the COVID, yes.
And how was it? I heard it was painful because they have to push this cotton?
Well, they stick it up your nose, and it's, it just, it makes your eyes water like you want to sneeze.
And how many times they stick it up your nose?
Just once.
Yeah, that's it? Each side?
Unless you jerk your head back like I did, and then they had to do it again.
So you had it, you had it done twice because you jerked your head?
I jerked my head, and they're like, "You can't jerk your head." So then they had to do it again. So it just, it just makes your nose pucker and your eyes water, and, but it's, you know, relatively painless.
Okay, because I heard from friends of mine that it was painful. Anyway, I'd like to know if there's any kind of a group in our state protesting this whole COVID lockdown and restrictions? Any legislators, any citizens, lawyers, that are fighting this thing so that we can get our civil rights back? Do you know of any group fighting the state, fighting the governor?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Nothing?
I know several have tried, but they've been unsuccessful.
They have tried? And I'd like to know, because I want to contact the ACLU and Public Citizen to put a lawsuit in for our rights, that we have to continue to wear masks when there's hardly any activity in our county, and everything's going down in the state. And I'd like to have the restrictions removed because my civil rights, I feel, are being violated with this whole disease drama. So if anybody wants to be on the lawsuit and wants to make a lawsuit, whether they're an attorney, a legislator, a citizen, contact me, and we'd like to do some kind of a group thing if we can. So if you're interested, are you interested in fighting it at all, or, you know, going to the lawyers, using O'Connor or somebody? Are you interested in fighting this thing, or just complying?
I'll fight it my own way.
And how are you doing it?
Through my phone calls and people I talk to and people I do with.
So who are you calling? What do you think? We should call our legislators?
You need to do what you need to do. I'll handle my stuff my way, and personally, you need to handle your personal stuff your way.
Any suggestions to the public from any of you that we can fight this thing because it's going to go on, it looks like forever, maybe months and months and maybe years? And people are asking, when will it end? So any suggestions to the public?
The answer to the riddle, Vera, it never ends. You know, when you give that much power to government to be able to do this stuff, it never ends. So the only way you stop this is by changing the Constitution so they can't do it. Now, there's actions right now in Harrisburg to try and do that, to change the Constitution.
So do you know who's doing that, changing the Constitution? What group?
Legislators. I mean, you can search it online and find it.
Constitution of the state you're talking about?
State constitution.
There is nothing in the state constitution that gives the governor the power to do all what he's doing.
That's the argument they took to the Supreme Court, and they lost, and the Supreme Court said he does. So now they got to rewrite it so that it's real clear and definite that he doesn't have the power.
Hopefully, he'll be indicted for the nursing home murders first.
Hopefully, he'll be indicted for the whole thing that we've had to go through now. It's six, seven months. It's absolutely outrageous, and it's a tyranny of the government on the people, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Just to kind of follow up on that, in the past seven weeks, there's seven days, in the report that came out from the state on Monday, our PCR rate has increased by, it's up to like, what, 5.7% this week? And we moved from a low-risk county to a moderate-risk county.
That is correct.
And, so have you had communications from Department of Health, contact tracers regarding the virus spread?
I want to go in the record of saying that I do encourage people to wear masks. I do respect Governor Wolf and the decisions that he's made. I think that as a public leader, we also need to regularly communicate that, but we have no control over that. We have no control over what Governor Wolf says. I believe we need to be conscientious of one another and respectful of one another. With that being said, we were informed that they have hired additional contact tracers, regional managers within our area. We've been informed that these individuals will begin to be working with us. We don't know when. As last report, we, I believe we only have one contact tracer right now for Wyoming County, but that will be changing, and we will have additional help as needed.
I believe the state put out something yesterday or Monday that regarding the number of contact tracers that they were onboarding and contracting with to help out the Department of Health.
Yes, so I think we're in that kind of transition period where people are getting trained and people are being hired, and they're getting individuals to help with contact tracing in areas where there has been an increase in cases. Being very conscientious of that, and, you know, it's very important, specifically for our vulnerable populations, that we do what we can.
I would just like to make this comment. Unless you're wearing an N95 mask, these are absolutely useless.
Yeah, right.
But I have to disagree with you with that, and you're entitled to your opinion.
It's not an opinion. That virus is so tiny, it goes right through.
And, you know, we can talk about this later, but it depends on what source, and if that source is politically motivated.
The CDC.
Yeah, CDC is politically motivated.
Number three on the agenda. I notice quite often, and I just need, I guess, maybe a bit of clarity, there's quite a few times we see children and youth services being paid for throughout the agendas for different things, and this one is in a spot where, you know, you call it the bills when you go over them. I'm just wondering, can you explain the difference of, you know, what's in the bills and what would be separated in some of these other numbers when we do have them?
You want us to break it out for you and put a definition under everyone? Or you're just asking in general? General expenses, wages, insurances, federal payroll taxes?
No, I'm sorry, the children and youth?
The children and youth?
Yeah.
That's all the stuff, you know, we have lawyer's fees over there. We have all the services that we do always have on the agenda, and payroll. Anything they need, they run that department.
Foster parents.
Foster parent.
A lot of them is foster.
And that's why I was asking, because I know generally those kind of things are separated out in the agenda. Have you, is it just that you're combining them now and putting them into the general bills now?
No, we're not. This is the way it's been for the last 13 years that I know of. It's still the same. So basically, you have to have an understanding of fund accounting and how things work. Children and Youth is another agency like domestic, where we get reimbursement from the state, a certain percentage rate of reimbursement from the state for the costs for children and youth. So what happens is, through the fund accounting, the county pays the bills for children and youth. When the state finally gets around to send us the money they owe us, then Children and Youth pays us back. So this is just an accounting function to track the money, to see what we've paid against the Children and Youth program.
Okay, so then, when we have them in other areas of the agenda, that's generally like the outside sources that we, that the kids are actually going to, to receive the services? And these are more generalized?
This is all internal. And even though the internal may be because they're paying an outside agency, it's internal to us because we're paying the bill for Children and Youth, and then Children and Youth pays us back when they get their funding from the state, which usually the state's a quarter or half a year or three quarters a year behind.
That helps a little, thank you. Then also, number four on the agenda, when the county picks up the tab for these seminars, the CPE prep courses, those types of things that actually aid and add to somebody's qualifications, is there ever anything written in there when they go for these things that, you know, if they don't stay with the county and they take another job that this helped with, that would get reimbursed? And maybe shouldn't there be? Because, you know, so many other employers actually do have those written in, that when, you know, somebody goes for training, if it puts them in a better position where they can pay another job, that it's to be repaid, you know, within a certain amount of years. I think it's only fair that if other employers can do that, the county really should be doing that too, and that way, we would be getting money back if we lose these employees immediately like we do. You know, we just have such a high turnover that it wouldn't make sense that they'd have to repay us.
And we have, I was wondering what the county has spent thus far on the legal fees for the additional solicitor brought on for the bid challenge and for the election board suit, if we haven't, if we have those numbers yet?
I don't have that number in front of me. Is that what you had?
About, for everything right now, it's about $35,000.
And this is for additional attorney? Our solicitor can't handle those types of things?
For the specialized services we've.
The solicitor handles looking over contracts, you know, advising us, reviewing things for us, and stuff like that. He's not, it wasn't in his agreement to do federal court cases.
So the building that we just posted for the opening on that, that was in, that's similar, I mean, we had, what, we paid $30,000 for an outside attorney for that, for the building? And I guess the question is, why the solicitor can't handle that?
Well, if you were going to have brain surgery, would you go to a family practitioner or a brain surgeon? Probably a brain surgeon, right? So different lawyers have specialties in what they do.
Right.
And that was in lawsuits that we felt that we needed to hire that firm for, and they handled stuff worse in the past.
I guess my understanding that our past solicitor did handle things like that, though, so.
Well, we hired outside counsel as well, with our past solicitor as well.
We're not doing anything different that wasn't done?
Nothing different, yes. And I understand your concern coming, you know, at the end of the day, we have to answer to the taxpayers to do. And when you have a specialized lawyer that specializes in a certain area, you know, our ability to win a case, you know, is what is the utmost of importance. And this was a situation that we did win that case. It did, and the end result was, we did save money, because that was a case that could have amounted to quite a bit of money. And at the end of the day, the taxpayers are the number one priority, and those things have to be considered.
Well, at the end of the day, you say we saved money, but if it cost us $30,000, and the past solicitor was actually capable of doing that, they still ended up costing us an extra $30,000.
There were times in the past when this was also done in past terms. I will go in the record of saying that. This is not anything that's out of the ordinary of what has happened in the past.
So the county has a couple of cases filed against it now, and without delving too far into the, you know, the legal realm.
That's good, because we can't talk about it.
Right. So, but do the commissioners intend to hire outside legal counsel to handle those upcoming cases as well?
It's being handled through CCAP.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Can we get on with our business?
I just want to ask too, can you explain, since Stacy brought it up, the PCR rate supposedly rising the past seven days? Can you explain the PCR rate, what that actually means?
It's how many cases per 100,000.
What kind of cases?
It's how many positive cases per 100,000 individuals.
Positive for what? Positive for what?
Positive for COVID.
So are they saying they're infected with COVID or just positive with PCR?
They have had a positive test for COVID-19, and it's the rate of how many individuals within your community per 100,000.
So the thing is, even if you're infected, these are cases, which doesn't mean they have the actual symptoms of the disease, that doesn't mean they're in the hospital, it doesn't mean that they're ill. So the more testing you do, which we are doing, aren't we doing more testing in our county? The more testing you do, the more cases can come up. So it's more testing and not so much an actual disease that is manifesting. So I just want to see if that has some clarity. You know, when they say PCR rate, what does it actually mean? What are they testing for? In the blood, you know?
That, I'm not a medical professional, but it's a positive test. It's a positive test for COVID.
Maybe Stacy knows, since she brought it up.
COVID is real, Vera. You think it's a myth or something. People are dying throughout the country and the world. I mean, it's real.
Well, if you believe that, what are they dying from? It's just, it's just a virus, like we've had all the time. But it's not, but we don't destroy the whole country for it and turn everything upside down.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
We've had.
We're very respectful of your opinion, but we've now spent about 10 minutes on you promoting that this isn't real, we have to move on.
You counted 10 minutes, really? Prove it.
See, this is kind of a bit of a follow-up from, and I'm not sure if it's related to the Barnes-Cassin or not, but it's kind of a combined question. Number five, too, you have non-hospital inpatient services for drug and alcohol, and it kind of goes on the same line. When we pay for these, is this like non-insured that we're being paid for, or does everything go to insurance first, and these funds are to, you know, pay for the ones that don't have insurance?
Colleen, do you mean number six?
Well, number five is the alcohol program, and that's also a non-inpatient.
You must have it from the website.
Yeah, I have it from the website, sorry.
That's okay.
And then.
Do you have a thing? She gave me a copy.
It's kind of, you know, the follow-up to the other.
Stacy has the paper for you.
Barb, do you want to handle that, how that's?
Sure.
Yeah.
So this rate is for the non-insured client. So we always first check, my office for the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs, we always check if someone has insurance and if someone qualifies for medical assistance. We only will pay this rate if it's someone who, for whatever reason, is not eligible for medical assistance or has absolutely no insurance. And just to put on record, similar to children and youth services in the county, all of this is reimbursable from the state. So all of our funding comes from the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs at the state, and then that's how the costs are paid for the individuals we cover for treatment services.
All right. If somebody had, if somebody can't afford the extra bill, like their insurance covers a certain part of it, then would we pick up, you know, to help them with that too?
Yes.
And that would be a different rate?
So the way we would handle the underinsured person, we would run the insurance through the provider, and then if someone, say, has a deductible that needs to be met, or a copay that needs to be met, we would meet it at the rate that we have established with the provider. So in this case, it's $300 to $5 a day, and then the insurance would pick up once the deductible or the copay is met.
That helps a lot, thank you.
Sure.
Colleen, I'm sure Barbara will talk with you after the meeting if you have more questions too.
That was pretty good.
All right. Any more question on number nine, if I can? The payments are to be a certain percent of what's actually paid and distributed to the fund. What's the total of the funding that's been distributed? And that's, I say it's number nine, but I have a.
Number 10, you're talking about with the TRHAB, the care money?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what was your question?
Do we have a total what the funding's been paid out? Because that percentage that they get for the grant funds for administering it is supposed to be paid out as a percentage of what is actually paid to the business.
Okay, excuse me, I'm just, sorry to interrupt you, but I'll just cut to it. Sure. TRHAB isn't charging us anything to handle that for us. And we already discussed the numbers. We have the $126,000, and then for the fire companies, we set about $290,000. So add those together. That's about where we're at at this time. And TRHAB's not charging us anything.
So this payment isn't for administration, then?
No, 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 this is what's going to the 23 businesses that have applied.
Okay.
And the money too, just to clarify, doesn't go directly to the business. TRHAB will pay their life bill or their rent bill or whatever it is that they need. It's not, they're not going to give a check to the owner of the business.
No, that's clarified quite good, thanks.
And it's in grant form, so there's an application.
So this, it's all for the businesses?
Right, they have to be vetted and everything.
That's good, thanks.
Through TRHAB, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I just have one comment. One of the people in this room had a question about the reliability of the COVID test. And when the question was expanded on, the answer from Commissioner Herschel was, "We've spent about 10 minutes on you, and we have to move on." I think it was less than two minutes, and probably much less than two minutes. That's number one. And number two, I would like to remind Commissioner Herschel, you work for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to close public comment.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, close public comment at 9:29. And open the Commissioner's hearing. Actually, we are, we're going to prove the minutes, number two?
No, it's two all in favor, first.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor. Aye. Sorry.
Motion to approve item two.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel to approve item number two, to approve the minutes of the August 12, 2020 meeting, all in favor. I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to recess the commissioner's meeting and open the salary board meeting at 9:29, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion to approve item.
Salary board meeting opens at 9:29.
Public comment.
Is there any public comment on the salary board?
Motion to close public comment.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to close public comment at 9:30, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve item two.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes of August 12, 2020 salary board meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve three.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the 2021 holiday schedule, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve four.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to create the full-time union eligible position of GIS technician, 1538 per hour, effective August 26, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the residual bargaining unit contract and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve five.
I will second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to create the full-time union eligible position of probation officer slash firearms instructor to be in addition to a current employee's job responsibilities, receiving an additional dollar per hour added to the employee's base hourly rate, effective August 26, per the probationary period and benefits according to the probation bargaining unit and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve six.
I will second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the safety chute purchase and reimbursement policy for the Susciana County Recycling Center, approved by, or seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve seven.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to close salary board meeting at 9:31, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Jason.
Aye, Jason.
Motion to approve item four.
I'll second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to pay the bills, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve five.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the following seminar requests and payment for seminar requests, total, I'm sorry. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve six.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve entering into an agreement between Lackawanna-Susciana Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs and BGI Brandyline for contracted services for non-hospital inpatient residential treatments at a cost of $305 a day, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve seven.
I will second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve entering into a contract between Lackawanna-Susciana Drug, Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs and Barnes-Kaysen for physician and pharmacy services at a cost of $150 per visit, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve eight.
I will second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a contract with the Sheriff's Department and Court of Common Pleas in the Domestic Relations Section for warrant petition and security services, effective October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2025. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve nine.
I will second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the following tax bureau exoneration request, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Motion to approve item 10, with the understanding that this is state money, not county money.
I will second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the payment of $126,640.27 to TRHA for the sub-agreement for the use of CARES County Relief Grant Funds for small business assistance, with the understanding that it is state money, not county. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve eleven.
I will second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to add the additional duties of firearms instructor to the adult probation officer, Michael Fasselnett, effective August 27, 2020, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 12.
I will second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Sean O'Neal-Hoopiny to the open full-time union eligible position of recycling technician at $10.25 per hour, effective August 10, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the residual bargaining unit contract and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of recycling coordinator, Jennifer Hibbert. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 13.
I'll second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the termination of Jaden McNelly from the position of part-time corrections officer, effective August 12, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shell. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 14.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve hiring of Matthew Snow Kingsley to the open part-time union eligible position of corrections officer, $14.96 per hour, varied hours, effective August 17, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 15.
I'll second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to accept the resignation of Angela Hollerin from the position of full-time assistant director of domestic relations, effective August 17, 2020, per the recommendation of President Judge Jason Lay. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 16.
I will second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Jacob Peck Montrose to the open part-time union eligible position of corrections officer at $14.96 per hour, varied hours, effective August 25, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit, county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shell. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 17.
I'll second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to accept and regret the resignation of Michael Welch from the position of full-time corrections officer, effective August 26, recommendation of Warden Mark Shell. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 18.
I'll second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and accept the termination of Matthew Osh from the position of part-time corrections officer, effective August 23, 2020, per the recommendation of Mark Shell. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, aye.
Motion to approve 19.
I'll second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the transfer of Dakota Sherman from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open union eligible position of full-time corrections officer, $14.96 per hour, effective August 27, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and- Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 20.
I'll second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the hiring of Glenn Hodge Paulstedt to the open part-time union eligible position of corrections officer, $14.96 per hour, varied hours, effective August 27, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit and the county policy, per the recommendation of Warden Shell. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion to approve item 21.
I will second that. I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the transfer of Jer Nojowalski, did I say it correctly? Nojowalski Esquire from the position of part-time conflict counsel, parent's attorney to the open non-union position of part-time assistant public defender at $36,000 per year, effective August 31, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Linda LaBarbra, public defender. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve 22.